Let's remain standing and think about troops serving our country here and overseas. Thank you. There are extra agendas up on the stage here. I'd like to congratulate the two trustee elects, Mr. Barone and Ms. Corrigan, for their win in the election yesterday. Congratulations. Okay, the next workshop meeting is Tuesday, November 26th at 7:00 PM. The reorganization meeting is December 2nd at 7:00 PM. And the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees is immediately following the reorg meeting on December 2nd. I'd like to call up a representative from the Suffolk Lions Club, Mrs. Hagerty.
Good evening, everybody. Before I start, I would like to congratulate you, Mayor Mark Hoonas, on your election again.
Thank you.
And I would like to congratulate Joe Corrigan and Chuck Barone on their win last night. And I also want to thank Frank Hagan and Moira for their loyal service to the Village of Suffolk over the past few years.
Thank you.
The reason I'm here tonight is I'm representing for Suffolk Lions Club. And we are giving three certificates of appreciation to, I'd like to call up Kathy Mills. And it just reads Suffolk Lions Club 2019 Certificate of Appreciation awarded to Kathy Mills and the Village of Suffolk Recreation Department with thanks and gratitude for continuous support throughout the years.
Thank you.
And the next one is to Chief Clark Osborne. And it reads the same, except that it says with thanks and gratitude for your support for Dog Day 2019.
Thank you so much, a pleasure.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. And Mayor Mark Hoonas, if you would come up and receive this certificate for the award to the Village of Suffolk, Mayor and Board of Trustees and the Department of Public Works with thanks and gratitude for your support of Dog Day 2019.
Great, thank you very much.
In case anybody wants to know what Dog Day is, the second Tuesday, the second Saturday in September, the Lions Club has a Dog Day at the park across the street from the deer hockey rink. And we have dogs come, the owners bring their dogs, and we have a fun day with them. They do all kinds of silly little things and they get prizes. And it's really, and the money that we get goes to the Guiding Eye Dogs for the Blind. So I just want to thank the village for all of their cooperation when we do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Lions Club. Thank you, and thank you, and thank the Lions Club, and keep up the great work. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, it is now 7:09. I'd like to open up a public hearing to consider a local law to amend Section 254 of the Code of the Village of Suffolk entitled Vehicle and Traffic to Modify Time Limit Parking Areas and to Provide an Additional Handicap Parking Space in the Central Business District. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Magrino, please.
Yes, good evening. Actually, this first public hearing was with respect to the time limit parking on areas of Orange Avenue and Chestnut Streets, just changing some of what's existing. Frankly, Amy has really been working on this. I don't know if you want to comment on it. One of the purposes of tonight is the law is available for everyone to review and whether or not they want to kind of chime in and give their opinion on what they thought of the proposals. I don't know, you know, if we'll go through them, maybe Amy, I don't know if you wanted to mention it.
No, go ahead.
Okay. The first one is on Orange Avenue. It'll be two hours on the east side, the corner of Lafayette and Orange to 116 Orange. There'd be two-hour parking from 9:00 to 4:00. Same with the corner of Blovetway and Orange Avenue near the Sheldon. Same with, again, in similar area along the north from the corner of Blovetway to 114 Orange. Again, these are all two-hour parking, except Sundays and holidays. And on Chestnut Street on the west side at 92 Blovet, up again in the vicinity of the Sheldon, two 15-minute parking spaces. And on Chestnut Street, again, no parking, right in the vicinity of the entrance to the Sheldon. Same with Ramapo Avenue at the entrance of Pat Malone Drive to the corner of Ramapo Avenue and West Park. I mean, as you can see, if you're familiar with the area, especially with the Sheldon just coming in, it's kind of trying to limit all-day parking there. It's limiting it to two hours and certainly helping with the safety in terms of taking some parking away.
One of the things that I think the board would like to highlight to them, one, on Chestnut Street, two 15-minute parking spaces. I have received some phone calls from residents. And one option which you can see is listed is to have the 15-minute parking spaces available during an 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, you know, regular business day, and then open them up to the additional two-hour in the evenings and on Sundays and holidays. So that's one change that's noted. I don't know if the board wants to keep them two minutes, two 15 minutes entirely, or to make them specific to a period of time during the day.
I'm sorry, could you repeat which spots those are here?
It's on, it's the Orange Avenue, 1, 2, 3, 4 down. So it's right in front of the Sheldon. And they're currently listed at two 15-minute parking spaces. And the consideration would be then to limit that 15-minute to the normal business day, and then thereafter, when people are coming in to use the restaurants, the Sheldon really isn't conducting that much business, to open them up to the two-hour. So that's a consideration.
Two hours for the, what hours would the two-hour be in effect?
It would be after 4:00 PM.
Until when?
Until the 3:00 AM cutoff, which is what we use to do the street sweeping.
Okay.
And the overnight parking.
So I think the intention was to just kind of put it out there tonight and continue with the next, is that right?
Is there anyone here from the public, from the public that would like to comment? Okay, so at this time, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
We're going to continue.
Continue, excuse me.
Continue it to...
Chief Osborne, do you have any concerns in regards to the parking that's proposed?
No.
No, okay.
I've never been, discussed with the workshop, and I'm fine with it.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So you're going to continue it to December 2nd?
Continue the public hearing until December 2nd. Well, it has to be after the reorg meeting.
Right, so you get your children dressed up?
7:30. Do I have a motion to continue the public hearing to a date certain of Monday, December 2nd at 7:30?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's now 7:15. I'd like to, motion to open the next public hearing. Public hearing to consider a local law to amend Section 254 of the Code of the Village of Suffolk entitled Vehicle and Traffic to Establish Passenger Loading Zones in the Central Business District. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Magrino.
Yes, this one actually is not ready for consideration tonight. The, we have to make changes on it. The intent is in regard to passenger loading zones, again, the intention being to have, you know, some turnover so that people can get in and out and get to places without blocking spots. But the way it's written, it needs to be changed, so.
Okay.
I think also the intent is to say that loading and unloading zones are that. And if you're not, if you're a vehicle who's unloading for the merchants, not to use the 15-minute, the two-hour spot, but to continue to use the unloading and loading zones. Because what we have is deliveries, parking in the regular parking spots. So it's, it's to be able to enforce what is unloading and loading and what are other parking spaces, to allow customers to...
Instead of the commercial vehicles tying up the parking spots along Lafayette Avenue, that's what we're trying to establish. Need the microphone? Okay.
Right, and the way it's written, it does, it's, it's a little confusing, so.
Okay.
We're going to ask to continue that one as well.
Okay, so I have a motion to continue the public hearing to 7:40 on December 2nd.
You could do 7:35.
7:35. Motion to continue the public hearing on December 2nd.
Motion.
Trustee Hagan, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
You have a second, if you can.
Boy, I don't have it.
It kind of comes right after that.
I'd like to open the next public hearing. Public hearing to consider a local law to amend Section 254 of the Code of the Village of Suffolk entitled Vehicle and Traffic to Establish Restrictions on the Idling of Parked Vehicles in the Central Business District. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Magrino.
Yes, good evening again. So this is with respect to idling vehicles. And it, consistent with the county law, it would be to permit, you would be permitted to idle for longer than three consecutive minutes when a vehicle's not in motion. The county law does have some other provisions in there that are not necessary for, for our purposes, but this would be another violation that could be enforced here in the Village of Suffolk at the Village Justice Court. And again, to, you know, discourage vehicles from idling. And I defer to the chief, I don't know how many times that actually gets written, but it might be a little simpler to have it on the village code.
Right, so the reason being is that we did receive numerous complaints in regards to outside tables and chairs and people eating outside of some of the restaurants that participate in our program of idling vehicles and not pleasant sitting there eating lunch with a truck or car idling. So that's the reasoning behind it.
Right.
For half an hour.
So and again, it makes it a little, a simpler process to kind of address it here. And again, it's not so much to find people, just to get them to stop idling, moving at all.
Right, along with the appropriate signage.
Right.
Making, making the people aware of it.
Right.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? No?
Again, all of these are in the same procedural posture, so I'll just ask to put it over one last time.
Okay.
And for a vote at the next meeting.
Motion to continue the public hearing to December 2nd at 7:40.
I think 7:45.
Do I have a motion?
We did 7, 7:35 and 7:40.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Motion.
Trustee Dry, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. This is yours. Thank you. It's now 7:20. I'd like to open the public hearing to consider the Village of Suffolk acquiring a parcel of real property located at 37 Washington Avenue. Do I have a motion? Trustee Hagan, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Public hearing is open. So at this time, I'd like to make a brief statement in regards to this public hearing. Today, the Village Board, the Village of Suffolk Board of Trustees will be considering a series of resolutions in connection with the proposed purchase by the Village of approximately 1.87-acre parcel containing a vacant warehouse building and parking lot previously occupied by Avon at 37 Washington Avenue. The property is adjacent to the Village's community center and the municipal parking lots. The Village has negotiated a purchase price of $2,850,000, which will be financed through the authorization of $3 million in bonds, with the additional money being used for environmental due diligence, attorney's fees, title search, survey, and costs related to the acquisition of the property. Considering that this is a strategic acquisition for the Village of Suffolk, the public will be provided the opportunity to comment this evening. The board is in agreement that this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the Village of Suffolk. The property located in the downtown area of the Village is strategic due to its ample parking, which is key to continued redevelopment of our village. Securing this property now for municipal purposes allows for the Village to ensure the property is available for a variety of potential municipal uses and potential opportunities for future economic development. The property is also key, is in close proximity to the Village's community center, village hall, and two firehouses. My fellow board members and I have spent a significant amount of time considering acquiring this property and want to ensure that it is realized to its fullest potential. All believe this is a wise investment of the Village's taxpayers' dollars. We also recognize that the revenue from parking should, should it be turned into a municipal parking lot, will help offset the annual cost of borrowing. The Village's significantly improved financial condition and upgraded bond rating, along with low interest rates, make this a good time and opportunity for the Village to finance the acquisition of this property. As part of this negotiation, Avon has agreed to continue paying a share of the pilot agreement associated with this property to all of the other taxing jurisdictions. And the Village has agreed, as it will be the property owner, to waive its share. Thus, all other jurisdictions, including the school district, are guaranteed to continue to receive the pilot payment associated with the property for the next five years. This board believes the acquisition of this property will encourage planned and responsible development in our community. And I thank the board members for sharing the vision, my vision, of Suffolk's future. So at this time, we have Mr. Nick Ward-Willis, who will be presenting a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation. Kathy, if you could help me out with the screen and the PowerPoint. And we will answer questions after the PowerPoint presentation. If you would come up, state your name and address, and you'll be limited to a four-minute period of speaking. And afterwards, follow-up questions. Thank you.
I want to point, Mr. Mayor, there's never been a time limit set, and I think it's criminal to set a time limit. Never been a time limit left in the Village Board meeting, okay? I'm going to go out there, if you want to stop them, you're going to stop them. I think you're wrong. I think it's criminal behavior, and it should start now.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, if I can mention, and I'm sure Ralph would save us his life, so I apologize, Ralph. The municipality board has the ability to regulate how much time speakers have, as long as it's announced in advance, as you've done here. You're certainly within your rights to do so, to establish rules of procedure, notwithstanding what the gentleman said. What I'm going to do tonight is set forth a little background on the Village's acquisition and interest in this property. I've had a number of discussions with the Village Board in executive session, because it's being the discussion of real property. And I thank the board for the difficult questions that's asked of us, that has helped the process in the contract negotiations. I know Avon is here, and I'm not going to...
Mike, please.
I'm sorry, you can't hear me? Thank you, I appreciate the feedback, good to know. So, my name is Nick Ward-Willis with Keenan Bean, the Village Attorney. I'm going to provide you tonight with a little overview of the Village's interest in this property and the process. Just waiting for the PowerPoint to load. While we're waiting, the... There are five resolutions before the board tonight that need to be considered. One is the secret resolution, the State Environmental Quality Review Act, before the city, the Village can purchase the property, certainly. Before the Village can purchase the property or issue, go out to bonding, it needs to go through the State Environmental Quality Review Act. So in the agenda packet, it was an environmental assessment form. This particular action does not have a significant adverse environmental impact because it's already a developed property, and at this time, there's no proposed development. It's going to remain in its current condition. The second resolution before the board is to approve the contract of sale for the $3.85 million, and subject to the form and substance being reviewed by our office as to the contract of sale. The third resolution is to approve the issuance of $3 million worth of bonds, which is subject to a permissive referendum. The fourth resolution is to modify the pilot agreement that the Village and other agencies have entered into with Avon with respect to this property, just the 37 Washington Avenue property. The purpose of the pilot modification, it's really just two points. It's one, to release this parcel from the pilot agreement so that it can be sold by Avon to the Village. And the second is to commit Avon to continue, even though that property is out of the pilot program, to commit Avon to continue making tax payments for the life of the pilot agreement for the next five years, so that the taxing jurisdictions, the school, the county, and the town, do not lose their tax dollars. Of course, as the Village is acquiring the property, Avon's not going to pay taxes to the, to the Village. And the fifth resolution before the Village Board of Trustees tonight is a resolution to authorize the Village to retain an environmental firm to do environmental due diligence.
I think, did we get it, did we get the PowerPoint on?
It's almost up on the screen. Looks like it's raining.
All right, let's try to get the PowerPoint on the screen.
Yep, so I can continue while we're doing that.
Okay.
You know, many of you may have been here when Avon presented to the Village Board several weeks ago as to why it was asking the Village and the other taxing jurisdictions to modify the pilot agreement. Avon is going through some unique economic times. There are negotiations with Natural Brazil, you've read about it in the newspapers, for the purchase of Avon products. These, Avon in Suffolk is comprised of, you know, three parcels, non-contiguous parcels, one on the railroad track, which is just parked, the main research and development property, and then the Nail and Eamonn Building, which Avon purchased in the 1970s. Avon is seeking to modify the pilot agreement to allow for the sale and for that closing to occur by the end of this year. So the current pilot agreement was entered into in September of 2003, and it expires in the Village's fiscal year, ending May 31st, 2025, so in approximately five years. Avon has proposed that as part of this deal, the pilot agreement would be amended that would allow the sale of the property, and any potential buyer would use it for uses, could use it for uses outlined in the central business zone, scheduled general use requirements for the, for that district. It should be noted that in less than five years, upon expiration of the pilot agreement, Avon, or whomever purchases Avon, if that occurs, could sell the property for any uses outlined in the central business zone districts. So at some point in time, even if the pilot agreement were not modified, Avon would have the ability to sell the property. So in fact, what the Village would be allowing is for that property to be sold sooner than it would otherwise be. Avon also has the ability under the pilot agreement to break the pilot agreement at any time and sell the property. However, that would be a financial penalty and would require Avon to pay the county and the other tax during jurisdictions an amount equal to the tax benefit that Avon receives under the pilot agreement. So Avon is instead seeking to have the agreement modified. If you're able to look at my PowerPoint presentation at this point, you'd see an image of the property, but I think everyone is familiar with 37 Washington Street and why it's in a strategic location for the Village, adjacent to the recreation center, near the firehouse, off of the main street, and near an existing municipal parking lot. It's currently in the central business district, which permits a variety of uses, commercial, for-profit, nonprofit, places of worship, banks, retail stores, indoor theaters, and a variety of retail store uses. So, let me talk for a moment about the vision, economic development in the Village of Suffolk. So as the mayor mentioned, this property presents the Village with an opportunity to create not just additional parking, but other municipal uses, or if not needed for a municipal purpose, the potential to sell a portion of the property to spur economic development in the downtown. And this would allow the Village to be positioned for the future and in attracting business and residential development projects through transit-oriented developments such as the Sheldon. And it's a trend in the Hudson Valley, that people are returning to villages, people are returning to their downtown areas. Uh-huh, we're there. So no, we just need to go to the currency. There we go, thank you.
Maybe we should start over here.
Oh, let me finish.
That's my lovely PowerPoint slide with a picture of the property. The existing municipal lot is in red, and the Avon Nail and Eamonn Building is in green. Those are just a slide talking about the general uses that I mentioned were applicable within that zoning district where the property is located. And the members of the board have a copy of my PowerPoint presentation, so I know it's on a double-sided screen, but you can follow along. So I'm talking about economic development in the Village. And as I was mentioning, the Village sees the potential and the need for parking in that area. Parking is difficult, there's always a need for parking, and this opportunity doesn't come along that often, so the Village sees this as being a key point in the future into continuing the growth to get residents to patronize the shops, and also to get more residents in the Village that will increase the tax ratables. And so it's not just spending money to buy a parking lot, it's all the other benefits that come with it, everything that this parking lot would support, and the ability to continue growth in the Village. Transit-oriented development, residential options are in demand, but despite the green movement, despite climate change, people still want cars. They want to go, we don't have the infrastructure out in Europe, people want vehicles, so there's still a need for parking. As an example, I'm advising the Sheldon as that, as you can see, 80% capacity with anticipation for all units to be filled by the end of this year, and the estimated cars per unit was 1.5, but it actually appears to be more like two cars per unit. And the Sheldon has requested, but not received, additional 24-hour parking permits. And the reason they haven't received them is because of the lack of space. The Village doesn't have those additional permits to make available for them. Additionally, interestingly enough, after the Sheldon opened, the request for overnight parking permits has also increased. Again, just demonstrating there's a need for parking, additional parking. Next slide is that in 2018, the Village had a parking study done as part... Next slide is that in 2018, the village had a parking study done as part of its economic development sustainability study. And the study concluded that Sufferin lacked the necessary parking to sustain economic development with its current parking resources at or near capacity. Again, supporting the village's belief that additional parking is needed. Additionally, the village, the mayor can speak to this as well, has received inquiries from projects that are put on the drawing board. People are interested in favoring residential development in the village. So it's not just those that are before the planning board, not those just under construction, but those that are going to queue up and be in the pipeline. And the village sees that there is continued growth in the village, and the potential for more growth to continue in the years ahead, and this parcel fits within the key resource. So let's focus for a moment, I keep mentioning parking, so what are the current village parking locations? You're more familiar with them than I am. Up on the screen, 117 spaces at the train station, there's Lot A with 101, Lot B and Lot F are your two largest, that are 205 and 212. And I'm advised by the village offices that, for example, Lot B with 205 units, the third one down, is at capacity, permits are no longer being issued, there are 208 merchant permits issued, daily permits are sold when available, and it's subject to three hours parking for shopping. Likewise, Lot F is near or at capacity with only annual, monthly, or daily permits being issued, and a need for additional parking. Likewise, Lot D has 82 spaces, approximately 25 spaces are contracted for the bus commuter parking, and then there's overnight parking, and Trailhead parking permitted there as So the village, before going down this path, has examined what are the current parking demands, and how are they being satisfied? And it's the village's belief that parking is at or near capacity in a number of these lots, and there's a need for more parking. So we've also mentioned that if it's going to be used for parking, there's a potential revenue opportunity here as well. So if 40% of a property were used for additional parking, that would add approximately 100 additional spaces available for residents, merchants, shoppers, and commuters. So just looking at it by the current permit types that the village offers, the daily and merchant permit, the monthly permit, the annual permit, overnight permits, and the 24-hour, seven-day required annual permits, it's estimated that those additional 100 parking spaces would bring in approximately $63,000 in additional revenue for the village. So what does the acquisition of 37 Washington mean for economic development? Are you for me to repeat this? It provides additional parking that's going to accommodate increased rail and bus ridership. It's going to accommodate additional commercial activities, restaurant growth, entertainment uses, and special events. It also provides additional parking resources to enable transit-oriented development projects, economic development projects, and the growth of the village's merchant community. So 37 Washington Avenue provides the village the opportunity to acquire land in a strategically located parking lot, along with the potential opportunity for the village, if it's not all needed for parking, or if it's not needed for the potential of a municipal building use, whether it's an emergency services, recreation center, whatever the case may be, as the village explores a number of variety of potential municipal uses. That property could also be sold to spur, a portion of the property, to spur economic development in the downtown, given its critical location. So the village negotiated a purchase price of $2,850,000. It secured an appraisal, as is required to do so, then has negotiated a purchase price with Avon. To finance the purchase, the village proposes to issue $3 million in bonds. It's to be noted, Avon did receive other offers from other qualified buyers, but Avon negotiated with the village in good faith, and we reached a deal, and thank you. So the village's purchase of this property is subject to the resolutions that I mentioned that this board needs to adopt, those five resolutions. It's also subject to the pilot agreement being modified by the school district, the county IDA, the county and the town. And I apologize, the county IDA has already approved the modification several, about three, two to three months ago. The county IDA, they were the first ones to approve the modification, as they currently hold the title of the property, they would have to convey it. So the concept of Avon modifying the pilot agreement to permit a portion to be sold has already been approved by one of the governmental authorities, the Rockland County IDA. And so, in summary, going through this, it's believed that the acquisition of a property, it is a good and fair value, the terms are fair to the village, it will support planned growth and development in the village, it will provide additional parking resources for the growing residential and merchant community, it will support continued economic development in the downtown area, and it also offers the village the opportunity to spur additional economic development, potentially by selling a portion, should it not be needed for economic development, for municipal purposes in the near future. So Mayor, that's sort of my summary. I'm happy to answer questions now from the board or the public, or open up the public comment portion.
Yes, I would like to open up the public comment portion at this time, and I would like to indicate that anyone that wishes to speak now, step up to the podium, state your name and address, and present. Yes, we can turn off the PowerPoint presentation and move the laptop, please.
Is this on? Hi, I'm Jana Kaplan, I live at Oakdale Manor. Hello. And my... Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Good. I'm Jana Kaplan, I live at Oakdale Manor. And my question is about the building that is coming with the parking lot. Is that going to be looked at as, is it going to be torn down? Will it become stores? Is it going to be apartment buildings? Like, what is the plan for that and the longevity of this? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are those all your questions?
That's the question.
Okay.
Should I leave it?
No, 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 you're good. No, no, I just wanted to make sure, that's all. Thank you.
Would you like me to answer that question?
Yes, Mr. Willis, please.
Thank you. So the factory building is about 33,000 square feet. Excuse my, fighting my cold. The village hasn't determined how that would be, the building would be used. It would be examined to see, could it be used for either village offices or perhaps warehouse and storage purposes in the short term? There's no intention at this point to tear it down. It would have to be examined as to how it would meet a general municipal purpose in the near future, or if not a general purpose, then would it be sold off, with the main portion being kept as the parking lot? So that would be the answer to Ms. Hopper's question.
Good evening. I think I'm the only person here in the room tonight who actually voted for the Avon pilot. Yeah, sure, excuse me. I have concerns about the building, too. I think that if there was, there's a sale in the building that are turning here, it's Washington Avenue. That's okay. I've been around here 78 years, I've known that. I was concerned, as I said, about the building, and I think that a part of the, put it in the sale that Avon, I'm sure they'll be glad to do it, because they know it's a safe building, would guarantee that the building would be safe, and also guarantee that if, you know, engineering study or any type of environmental study happened, that Avon would take the responsibility of cleaning it up. I mean, this place was, probably saw every chemical in the periodic table at one time or another, so what's happened to it, I don't know. I also don't think, you know, Mr. Albert was quoted in the paper as saying, you know, what about this building? To me, this is the worst part of the whole deal. What do we need this building for? What does anybody need this building for? It looks like we're buying, you know, something that we don't need. And I could very well see, to a certain extent, you know, buying the parking area, although, you know, what I read in the business papers is retail outlets closing all the time, Sears, Macy's, you name it, and small places do, all over the United States. So I don't know about, you know, the need for this parking, and, but I'm really concerned about the building. And I don't think it's a good idea to buy that building, I think getting the parking might make a lot of sense, but I think Avon wants to take this building off their hands, that's the way I see it. Thank you very much for your time.
Please step up and state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Eva Nordhauser, 116 Bonner West, Sufferin. And, okay, I just have a few questions. Basically, I want to say, I'm not opposed to the idea of purchasing the property, but there are several questions that are raised. Actually, tonight, when you talked about parking, I'm a little confused. How would buying parking on Washington help people at the Sheldon? You know, I don't see that solving their problem, I don't see it solving the problems of anybody who takes the train daily. And how is the parking, is that parking lot used now? Do Avon employees use it? Does anyone use it? Does anyone know?
Currently, they don't, they don't use the parking lot, it's just usually used for special events here in the village. And if they need, if they have any events at Avon.
Okay, so, right now, even though you cite a need for parking, no one seems to go there as an overflow, instead of, I mean, you're saying it's not utilized now, even though it's a beautifully open vacant space.
We cannot utilize it.
Do they use it? The seniors use it?
It's private property, so we're not able to utilize it. When we do, we seek permission and provide insurance requirements for it.
Because there's no signs restricting it.
Okay.
Okay, so, okay, that's just one thing. I want to second Jack's concerns about the possible environmental toxicity in the building, and have we built in anything to have the village, hold the village harmless? Should, you know, chemicals be found there? Now, there's, what guarantees do we have that we're not going to buy something that then can't be used? Does anyone, you know, has that been, perhaps that has been attended to?
Yes, Mr. Willis will speak to those points.
Certainly, there are some things I can't speak completely to answer your question, because the contract is, they're still confidential, it's not being fully negotiated with respect to all the issues, but certainly that is an issue that the village is, as resolution number five, is to have an environmental due diligence inspection occur of the property, so the village can get an understanding of the conditions in the past use of the property. And also, the allocation of responsibility, the allocation of that risk, is an issue for discussion with Avon as part of the contract negotiation. So the village is mindful of it, but we've not reached a conclusion as regards that particular issue.
And have you decided who's going to pay for this environmental study?
Yes, that is typically in a commercial setting, it's always the purchaser's obligation. The purchaser wants to pay for it, because they want control, they want to determine where they're going to do the examination, they want their consultant doing the work so that that consulting company is responding to the person that hires it, rather than someone that Avon hires.
Do we have an estimate of the cost, approximately?
We do, so for the phase one study, I believe the proposal was in the agenda packet, it's approximately $3,800 to have the phase one study. The phase one is an examination of the historical uses of the property, as well as a review of documents and papers on file, and then the phase one study then recommends what additional examination, if any, would be required of the subsurface conditions of the property. That cost is not yet known, but typically it's an neighborhood from $15,000, it could be $50,000 if you're doing a lot of sampling. This is a property that is fairly well-defined with respect to its past uses, so I think it's not an upwardly large number.
So the village will take that?
Yeah.
Okay, so that answers that, but the total amount is, or the, is still sort of a question, it's not, it's unknown at this point, and the village is taking on that risk. So that, that's, you know, another consideration. Yeah, who's paying for the environment? Okay, the other thing that piqued my interest was the fact that what was mentioned was that there were other offers that came to Avon for purchase. So why didn't they sell it? I guess that's the question.
It was through a series of negotiations with Avon that we were able to reach a deal. I'd like to think our offer and our use was better and more attractive in fitting the global scheme, but Avon did have another offer on the table, but they had to get approval from the village to modify the pilot agreement, and there were another issues, and we were able to negotiate a deal with Avon.
So that means no one ever considered the idea of eminent domain instead, to get a better deal for us? I mean, I just raised the question.
Yeah, the answer was discussed, and was not need to be more attractive.
Yeah, I mean, I realize that's an adversarial process, but, okay. And then my final question, or concern, really is that the term or the phrase "economic development," and I guess it sounds like the plan is to keep the parking lot and sell, hopefully sell the building. Has the village, have we, you know, before we commit ourselves to $3 million, have you had an independent business plan, or, you know, someone coming in and looking at the actual realities of what is, what's happening economically now? Because, you know, what's happened at the Novartis site, I guess has turned out to be a disappointment for us, or maybe in the long term. So, I mean, are we, the phrase "economic development" is certainly very attractive, but I'm concerned that we not become an investor, the village not become an investor, that's hoping that they can flip a property for greater profit without something more significant to hang our hats on. Thank you.
Michael Curley, 84 Orange Avenue. I've been coming to meetings for 25, 30 years, I've never seen a limitation on time, number one. And two, since you didn't adopt a hearing to have a board vote, and you didn't vote for it, that rule can't stand. So I'm going to talk for more than four minutes, okay? For the reason to educate the people, to talk about these different properties, okay? And if I may start with you, Steve, and you, Paul. When you ran last year, on your agenda and everything, you talked about transparency, about one of your main things you were going to do, okay? This has been, the representatives of Avon who are sitting over here went to the IAD, the county agency, back in June, to talk to them about a deal, okay? Since then, the county agi, I went back and read the minutes, okay? Since then, the county agency has said that, okay, we'll let you go ahead and we approve this if you get from everyone else. That means the school district, the village of Sufferin, the town, okay? Now, back to the transparency, because there's been months of meetings, and not once before October 29th, which is about nine days ago, around there somewhere, or less, seven days, has Avon ever been on an agenda in this village of Sufferin, okay? You have an obligation for transparency. This is a $3 million purchase, okay? I will also bring up an important fact here. They've talked about in the paper, and you've talked about how long you've been talking about it for. It's not in any of your agendas. I went back to May, okay? So that brings it back to April. Nothing, not once. So who are you people to keep this away from the people of this village? I don't think you have that right, number one. Number two, okay? The Avon... The, the, Avon put in this pilot in 2003. Jack Bean was there, you know, at the ti, I was here at the time too. Village residents were, we were afraid. We were scared. We were scared because, I'm not saying they said it, but they may leave. They may go. The big company who was keeping Suffolk alive may run. Well, now, Avon is selling. And because Avon is selling now, they want to go and get as much capital as they can before they leave. So, to do that, they have to break this pilot agreement. If they break this pilot agreement, Suffolk gets a fair amount of money, hundreds of thousands of dollars if they break it. So, if they sell it to someone else, we get hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, I say back to Avon, if you sell it, go sell it. Give us our hundreds of thousands of dollars. We can then go pick a little piece with that money. We can fix up the parking lot across from the post office, okay? I have other ideas too, but I'm not going to keep going on that one, okay? So, you, you should not have executive, this is not an executive session issue, buying a building. What is executive session may be a negotiation of the price, but you have no right to hold this back from the people. Now, we talk about the referendum. The mayor says that people can go out and get 20% of the signatures. That's only one way to do it. You can vote for a referendum. You can let the people decide in this village if they want to spend $3 million. It's not just the one way. You can put that in your vote now. That's the law. That's not my opinion. All right? So, I, if you go ahead and vote tonight, which I think is way too early, okay? Bean, you only gave the people seven, eight days for a $3 million purchase, something you're working on for months, is disgraceful, all right? And you should fix it. So, there's that big fear that certain people may buy it, that the Irish might buy it, okay? But let me explain the key to all this, all right? The whole central business zone is zoned for worship. The whole thing is zoned for worship. So, they could do it anywhere they want. Anyone could. The Irish could do it there. Chick-fil-A could do a Chick-fil-A, and in the back of Chick-fil-A, they could do a slaughterhouse. And I'll tell you why they can do that now. Because of the coffee shop that went in, we gave the manufacturing. We gave the manufacturing. So, manufacturing is not allowed in the central business zone. What we need is not to buy property, but do a comprehensive study of the village and do the zoning. The actual map that is out there right now in the book that the public can buy or lawyers have has a different zoning than what the village claims now. There were two zoning. There was light industrial, and there was central business. If you look on the one map, it says central business. Now, they come to realize, no, we got, we might have the wrong map here. This just came to me. And I compliment the building department for figuring that out. But we gotta, we have some questions here. We have some legal questions here, and I think we need to figure them out first before we vote. Okay, now, we talk about CECA, okay? CECA is the State Environment Quality Review Act. Whenever you do something, you do a form, okay? So, we did what they call a short form under CECA, okay? Now, if the village is talking to anyone else about buying this, or they know there's a different use, our CECA form is illegal right now. It's no good. I hear rumors. I hear different rumors. And you know what? If those rumors are true, do not vote for this. We will owe millions of dollars to people, okay? Now, let's talk about the bond. If the bond, okay, that we put in for was not told, was not, we did not tell the bond council that we had intentions of selling this property soon, we are misleading bond council, and it's an illegal bond, and it's a criminal act. We've heard of a supervisor who did criminal acts with bonds. I beg you not to perform a criminal act. And if the lawyer can help, I'm not saying the lawyer's involved. The lawyer may not know. You may not know there's other people who may want to buy this, okay? I'm making a choice to save this village from a major lawsuit because I think there's things going on that don't make sense. And I'm not going to allow it because it should have been more open, more public, all right? The only way you control anything is with proper zoning and enforcement of zoning. And unless we do that, we shall fail. We will follow in the same footsteps as other villages and towns around us, okay? I'm sorry for taking so much time here. I've got a little more notes, okay? And there's a lot of information, okay? Now, I don't know if we told, well, if bond council don't know it, I advise you to advise bond council with thinking about doing that. It may change, I don't know everything about bonds. It may change what kind of bond you do and how you do it, okay? But it's no different than what some famous guy did, all right? We're misrepresenting, there are investors when you do a bond. It's not just something comes from the sky. You're telling these investors you're doing a certain thing. If you're doing something else, you're committing a crime. And we don't need to do that because we haven't done anything yet, okay? And I challenge the lawyers that challenge me. That's why we need to go further. I challenge them because I'll, I feel comfortable, I feel very comfortable in the statements I'm making. I went and sat in the whole month of Chris St. Lawrence trial, at my own time, my own cost, because I wanted to know history. I wanted to know what was going on. So, I understand a little bit about it, okay? Now, now, if we go for this, and let's say we don't get all this, this nice, and, and nice, and I don't know you, so I'm not doing this personally to you again, sir, all right? And we get this nice $63,000, he says, we're going to get, we're not going to get $63,000. We're not going to get $63,000. It ain't going to happen, okay? Because, because he's giving you the best, they're giving you the best, I thank you for the question. They're giving you the best possible numbers, okay? Right now, if you vote for this, you're putting a 2% tax increase on every resident for 20 years, if it's a 20-year bond, okay? That's simple arithmetic. As a matter of fact, it could be even a little more. I'm doing it based on an amortization schedule where a bond is usually paid twice a year, all right? Something else I learned from the Chris St. Lawrence trial, okay? All right. So, you take that property now. You say we got 100 spots. You want to sell off the other piece of the property, okay? Well, they need parking. Where are they going to go? You have 33,000 spots here. I think per thousand, you need three, all right? Or per 3,000, I mean, it doesn't work. Formally, it doesn't work, all right? You'd have to knock down the building. You'd have to knock down the building and make parking, all right? And then settle it that way, okay? This village is not ready. We just, we just, and I'm not blaming no one here. I know who did what. I'm not, this village isn't ready for this. We just approved a building on Wayne Avenue. We gave them eight offices. Eight offices. It was a little warehouse. Gave them eight offices, and we assigned them seven parking spots for eight offices. No, no, I'm not the best kid at math, you know what I mean? But I would think for eight offices, you'd leave them more than seven parking spots, wouldn't you? You got to figure at least two, three people in an office. You got to figure people coming to see them. So, it's probably 40 spots. So, now, we're going to, we just gave up 40 spots. A mistake was just made recently, in my opinion. But I think it was made because we're not communicating properly. We're not talking enough, okay? I'm a retired fireman from the city also. After 9/11, we went and we did a, we did a thing so everybody could talk to each other and communicate to each other, all right? Now, I have another thought. If Avon has this big prop, big price to the building, why don't we say, okay, let them, let them sell it? Give us the difference. We'll sign off. Give us the difference on the high price and that difference, and we get that money and we'll sign off. But don't think the school, now, the school district hasn't signed off on this either yet, as far as I know. You would know that better than me, right?
Correct. That's the next step.
Right. The school district hadn't even signed off, okay? So, they're going to say, hey, what are we getting now, okay? So, not only, at the end of five years, we are not only losing our, all our village taxes, right, on that piece, we're also losing all of our school taxes on that piece, and we're also losing all of our county and town taxes on that piece. So, it's not just the one. And I'm telling you, as I stand here, the school district ain't going to say, oh, thank you for coming by, and sign a piece of paper. The school district remembers when we took the $65,000 from the Sheldon away from there. They're going to want $65,000 back. So, that'll come to about another .65 taxes we have to pay. Or that'll cover his $63,000. We'll still have the 2%. Then, we got the, I can wait to public, I can wait to the general session, or I can finish this, this little audit. Then, we have the Criminal Justice Act, which is mandated by the state of New York, which is going to cost us anywhere from $50,000 to $200,000. That's a half percent to 2%. Ramapo was only advocated about a billion dollars. So did Clarkson, and so did the county. What I'm saying to you is we're going to hit with a burger here. We're telling, these taxpayers in this village have paid umpteen amount of taxes. I'm not blaming anyone, but I'm blaming you now if you do it more to them, all right? Until you get a grasp and a hold of your planning and zoning and everything else and everyone communicate, you're wasting our time. You're hurting this village and you're costing these taxpayers. As you can see, I have the pilot agreement, okay? And in the pilot agreement, it spells out that they have to pay us money if they cancel. So, if they cancel, we get a ton of money, okay? So, maybe we take that money and use it. And what I do, I would do a comprehensive, comprehensive village plan so we get our building correct, okay? I'm right with you there. I already told you, bond, the bond is a misrepresentation. Do not file this bond. You want to correct it, you want to whatever, do not file this bond. It's criminal because we're doing something else with the property. It's not what it says here, okay? I'm going to go ahead and try to sell you that. I'm assuming he didn't know. I'm assuming you didn't know. I'm going to take you, you know, because anyone that would advise you to go ahead and do this and know, then they shouldn't be your village attorney. Okay. The CECA I told you about, okay? The CECA has to do it. We have to fill out a form, okay? And under that form, there's something in the law called segmentation, okay? You're not allowed under CECA to do segmentation, all right? If you go ahead and you set, and you, and you, and you file for CECA and you don't, and you don't eat, and if you know what you might be doing and you don't put it on there, okay, you're doing segmentation, the law is 100% against it. You cannot do it, all right? And the village has ideas what they want to do it. They know kind of what they're going to do it, okay? There's investors that want to buy it. Is there anyone in the room that kind of said they wanted to buy it? I think there is, Mr. Sickel. I think there is.
That's the only thing that's applying.
Okay, good. Well, you came around asking questions about me today, so I figured I'd just let you. So, I'm here. You can always talk to me, Mr. Sickel. I don't run, okay? Okay. With, with, with the Sheldon too, because that's part of, you brought it into the whole picture, they were supposed to park down the borefield with their extra spots, okay? We learned that we're not a transit-orientated village with the Sheldon, okay? The Sheldon was built, and the people they thought might move in, they weren't. It wasn't the young kids running to the city, okay? It was different people. So, we went there with, and as the gentleman pointed out, it's not what we think, okay? We're not ready for more downtown development. We can't handle what we got. We don't know, we're already saying we can't give out spots. We made mistakes. We don't need to make more. And this is not the solution to those mistakes, the $3 million. I think the people have a right to be involved in this conversation. It's a bigger conversation than just this, just this piece of property, okay? And you mentioned about a parking study. I think that was John Lang's parking study. Would that be fair to say? Okay, yeah. John Lang, John Lang was the planner for the town of Ramapo. So, if you'd like to have, would you like John Lang to do for Suffolk what he did for Ramapo? And I think you take that. That's a good point, all right? Again, we've been burdened with big, big tax increases over the last four or five years. I'm not here to blame no one. I think it's time that we really start thinking about what we're doing. You know, you force people out when you do that. It may not, maybe it doesn't affect you personally. It affects a lot of people. There's a lot of people, you want the young couples coming too? You can't, you can't. What's the biggest problem when a realtor sells a house in Suffolk? The taxes, huh? I'm asking you to reconsider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Curley.
Well, first of all, I'm Brian Sickel. I'm an attorney in the village that Borden brought up in Suffolk. And I congratulate Mr. Mann for his vote for the pilot, because I was one of the two or three people, you may recall, Jack, that came in to suggest that the vote was necessary, and I think you did the right thing. So, congratulations on that. To the nice lady that thought that the building might be an environmental problem, that's something for the lawyers to take. You don't buy a house, you don't buy anything without having an environmental study. I'm sure that that will be overcome and resolved. I really can't think of a merchant or a business in the village of Suffolk, with the exception of the gentleman who spoke perhaps, that would be opposed to something that would drive this type of economic development in the village. My understanding is that the village had a study done and the West Point systems, and it confirmed the need for parking in order to keep the economic engine going. And to me, this is your opportunity to act on that very sound recommendation. There are a lot of benefits to the property. I have no intention of buying the property. I don't know where that came from. Absolutely none. But it certainly has commercial, residential, municipal value. They're not making property anymore. As far as the pilot's concerned, certainly if Avon were to sell it to someone else, they'd owed the village money and others. The value of that money couldn't possibly offset, in my view, the loss of the value of this piece of property to the village in the long run. It couldn't possibly offset it. It's very short-term thinking to think you're going to pave a parking lot and lose almost two acres of property, prime property, in the village. If it's not acquired now, the village largely loses control of a principal piece of bill, of a property in the village that has long-term potential, long beyond when this whole group of people that we have before us are here. It'll go on forever. It's the last piece of property that can be acquired of this size in the village. It has some economic benefit. Land isn't being made anymore. And this is your opportunity to do the right thing for the village. Don't let the opportunity slip you by. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Genetino, Two Memorial, for the attorney. Do you have any answers to what my good friend had to say about loss of the pilot for these other parties? They're guaranteed it for the next five years, aren't they?
Correct.
Okay. He made it sound like they were going to lose their pilot money.
No, they're not.
If they were, they would never sign on to it. If they're going to get it, they'll sign on to it.
Correct.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good evening. Dagan LaCorte, Burlington Avenue. Been a while since I've been up here. And I want to congratulate the two trustees up there, Mr. Hagan and Ms. Hertzmann, for your service to the village. It's greatly appreciated. And to congratulate the incoming trustees. I think, you know, I've been here listening and, you know, I understand people's concerns about the village acquiring and making a financial commitment of this size. And again, it's, I'm not one who typically is a proponent of villages and municipalities getting in the business of buying property. But as the speaker right before me said is, look, this is a two-acre parcel of property in the heart of the downtown. That this is something that doesn't come up for sale very often. And despite what an earlier speaker said, you know, maybe saying that the Sheldon is not a success, or that a new business that just opened up downtown is doing something that, you know, is previously not been permitted, although I know there's other manufacturing that goes on in this village, these things are successes. The Sheldon is, I believe, 90% occupied in under six months. There are new businesses opening up downtown, and I think things are moving forward in the right direction. It's something that's been going on for a while and has been going on of boards of both Republicans and Democrats. And I think that, you know, you have to be bold in certain situations. The future is uncertain. We don't know everything's what's going to happen, but I know that things that right now, like a, like a 90-unit development next to the train station, when I was up there 10 years ago talking about it, people thought it was crazy. Who's going to want to live near a train station? And I don't know everyone who lives there. I know that it's occupied. You know, a speaker spoke about saying it's not people who are using mass transit. I don't know where that person gets that information. I mean, I don't think it's legal to ask somebody what their age is or what they do. I just know that the building is occupied, and they're getting very good rents that people thought wasn't going to happen. People are talking about Section 8 housing. It's good, they're getting rents north of $2,000, and the building is pretty much rented up. And there are new faces coming into town and people frequenting downtown businesses. And I think that if you look back, I remember years ago... And, you know, the village, I think, if they acquire this property, will have the ability to plan something that will be of the best use. It may involve the building coming down. If you ask me, just looking at it, it probably does. You go down to Montclair, and Montclair built a building right in their downtown. That was something which we had looked at when we had talked about initially the Sheldon as an example, and what's gone on in Montclair. And right next to that, they worked with the municipality in building a garage. So the garage was able to provide parking for the building, and also parking for people who'd come in the downtown. I know also someone had said how people, it's not going to free up people from the Sheldon by parking there. It doesn't mean that the people of Sheldon are going to park there, it just means it'll provide more parking for the village, and then the village can kind of adjust their inventory and move people around. I think things are going great in the village in the right direction. I think we can always try to focus on the negative and criticize things that aren't perfect, but I see what goes on in the downtown every day, and there are new faces down there, new businesses opening up, and I think that this is bold. It has some risk, but I do believe that if the village purchases this property and takes some thought and consideration and community input, and then plans in the medium term down the road to do something here, I think it's going to be unbelievable. And I think, I truly believe, like the speaker said to me before, if the village does not purchase this property and lets it go to whoever buys it with the expansive zoning that already exists, we're going to be kicking ourselves for years to come. So again, I appreciate you taking this bold action, and I wish you the best of luck. And I'm just one resident supporting it, so thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 11 Fairview Place, and I'm a merchant downtown in the village since 1995. We definitely need more parking. Parking has always, has always been an issue. I'll definitely agree with my friend Mike over there that the B lot definitely needs some attention. Definitely, I can agree with him on that. But acquiring, you know, the young lady over here mentioned about the use of that lot now, it's private property. Avon's been pretty, pretty nice not doing anything with people parking there as far as towing cars out and the use of that lot. There's a lot of stuff that goes on that people park in there, and I don't know that every time they park there that they get an insurance certificate from the village. But there's definitely a lot of stuff goes on. They've been very gracious with that. And they've been a very good neighbor. You know, they've been good to, I'm a member of the fire department, they've been a good neighbor. Never refused to let us use the property for an event, that type of thing. But I'd also like to, you know, aside from the parking, I think that, you know, there can be a lot of creative uses for that property. And one of them that I would just like to throw out there is that, and I'm saying this as a private citizen, not a member of the fire department, which I am, okay, because I might get some flack from some fellow firemen about this, but, you know, it would be nice to see some sort of joint fire emergency services building there. The village is currently maintaining two separate buildings for the fire department. So, you know, to be creative and look at all the possibilities, you know, there's a possibility there that you could put one building up to house both the fire departments, and maybe another problem that we're having in the village with ambulance service, maybe that might be something that might be considered there. So there's a lot of possibilities for that property, and I definitely agree that you don't want to pass up this opportunity to make that purchase of that property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Ori Lacata, 96 Lafayette Avenue. As a business owner for over 40 years in the village, I support your project. I can't speak for the entire Chamber of Commerce, but as president, I think you can see the new businesses that have come in and how much the chamber has supported you guys. And I hope that everything works out with the legalities and everything. And the only thing the chamber has asked me is that if we could just begin to work on a lighting project downtown. The downtown is terrific at night, but I think we need more light. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to come up and speak in regards to the project? Okay, I heard many concerns. I heard pros, I heard cons, but I'd like to clear up a few individual items. First of all, I'd like to thank Avon for the use over the years of allowing the village of Suffolk to use it for special events, overflow parking, and the needs that we have. Thank you. They have been a good neighbor. And to speak about transparency, these were scheduled on the agendas numerous times in September. They are contract negotiations. We need these properties, this property here, for additional parking and to spur economic development, as we spoke about. It also allows for us to reallocate parking throughout the village. Everyone knows that we do have a parking concern here in the village for residential parking, overnight parking, and merchant parking. And the more parking that we have spurs further economic development and allows for use of stores, storefronts on Lafayette Avenue by the general public being able to come up and park on Lafayette Avenue and go shopping and go dining, instead of trying to strategize where to park their car, because everybody is pushing their cars out in the street when there's no parking available in the lots. We are a community here in the village of Suffolk that welcomes everyone, and we don't alienate anyone in our statements. So to try to alienate people here in the village of Suffolk is something that is not acceptable. And going one step further in regards to the bond resolution as the statements were made, there was a misrepresentation. There was no misrepresentation to bond council in regards to the acquisition of the property. The bond council was made aware of the potential of subdividing the property. Those are some of the outstanding comments. I thank everyone for their comments. And it seems that it will generate economic development and will be a benefit to the village of Suffolk and is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Those are my statements. From here, I would like to invite anybody else up to speak once again if they have any other concerns.
Can I just speak from here? Um, no. Okay. The fact that the village chose the village...
I'm sorry, hold on, Ms. Nordhauser, that we can't hear you, but I can repeat your question if you would like to stand there. Okay.
Well, I'm just raising the issue of the fact that, you know, very soon there will be a turnover in the composition of the board and the government of the village. And, you know, I'm just wondering whether that should not be taken into consideration in terms of, we don't know the position of the incoming trustees. You know, we just ask that you, you know, take that into consideration. Perhaps it's not the best move. Perhaps this should wait until the new trustees are sworn in.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to, because I was brought up as people talked about me, okay? I respect Mr. Sickel, but Mr. Sickel himself is looking for a zone change. He's approached the village to get a zone change on property of his own, which he has a right to do that. So Mr. Sickel is also, matter of fact, for years you've approached the village, for, maybe back as far as 10 years, approached to put a zone change by the church for about 100 and something condos or something of that nature, okay? So whether you were looking to, if I misspoke that you're not actually buying that property, okay? There is an agenda for people here, okay? There is an agenda, and it's to look out for the village, okay? I know you live over in Montevella in Florida most of the time, okay? And, but, but, but there is, there is a financial gain here somewhere, all right? I'm just old-fashioned looking out for things, all right? And I understand Mr. LaCorte came here and talked about how I see things and whatnot, okay? Well, he's also looking for a zone change too, next to the coffee machine, trying to put a...
Excuse me, Mr. Curley, please address the board.
Okay, good, I will, Mr. Curley.
Thank you.
As you well know, he's also looking for a zone change. And if I'm incorrect on anything, or he's approached you, Mr. Sickel's approached you, we both know that. We all know that, all right? Matter of fact, maybe even approached you to buy some, or to switch the firehouse over. Because then I heard someone talking about a firehouse switch. So there's something going on here that's not in those papers, and that's why I'm telling you we're misleading the bond council, and that's why I'm telling you we're misleading, we're definitely misleading SECA. We're not, we're not being, we're not being honest on it, okay? And you can't, and you can't do, and I don't, and maybe, maybe I'm just educating you to it, maybe you're not, maybe it's no one being dishonest, because I don't want to accuse anyone of being dishonest, but maybe you just don't know. I would go back and look. I would not vote on this tonight for sure, if that seeker is wrong, all right? And again, and again, and as far as the Sheldon goes, I think the Sheldon's a great thing for Suffolk. When the Sheldon was for sale, Josh Goldstein, the owner, called me up. He said, "Mr. Curley, I need help, can you..." Oh, I'm sorry, let me turn this way. I said, I said that Mr. Goldstein called me up. Never knew the guy, never met him. He said, "Mike, I'm having problems getting this building." So I met with the building owner, who had a similar building to me, and I actually helped him get the property. So I'm for the Sheldon, I'm for the concept of it. What I said was, with the Sheldon, we didn't allocate enough parking. We made mistakes, and that's why I think we need a comprehensive review. And that's, that's where, that's where we're at back. So I don't, I'm for the Sheldon, I'm for the coffee shop, okay? I'm not for putting high-density housing in when there's no parking. And you talked about 100 parking spots we'll get, okay? If, you're not going to have them for everyone else, there's not going to be enough for this transit, for this development thing. There's going to be no, you're going to need it for the businesses if that's what you're claiming. So you can't even do everything you showed on that nice, on the nice slideshow there. It ain't going to be, it ain't going to make the difference. So just as long as you know how much you're paying per spot, that's all, okay? That's all. Because you're paying a lot, you're paying a lot per spot, okay? For spots that are tougher to get at. Now, what I don't want to see happen is that development goes on in different spots, and then they trade off the post office spots and say, "Well, we got the parking up there." So people have to walk further. I'm not looking for that. See, none of these, so let me just show my unselfish, none of these affect me, I'm further down. They don't really affect me. But even then, Mr. LaCorte wanted to talk, look at his lot, he bought the property, they roped it off. In 30 years, I've never roped off my property, and nor have ever towed anyone. Well, now the people that are buying property are roping and towing around, towing people and roping off. Well, I don't believe in that as a neighbor. Never done it and won't do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come back up and speak? Okay, just once again, I'd like to be clear that if we do proceed with this, the resolutions this evening, they are specifically for a municipal use. And once again, parking sprawl is impacting the entire village, no matter where you are in the village. But the municipal use is something that we're looking at, and it's an opportunity that presents itself now. Anyone else would like to say anything? Otherwise, I would like to close the public comment. Motion to close the public comment.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, excuse me.
Motion.
Motion, trustee Hertzman. Second.
Second.
Trustee Gerard, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Who's the second?
Trustee Gerard. This time, I'd like to make a motion to go into an executive session for legal counsel. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hagan, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So at this time, we're going to convene into an executive session, and we will return into the regular meeting to render a possible decision on moving forward. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to reconvene into the regular session.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Albert.
Second.
Second. Trustee Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you for bearing with us while we were in executive session. There was a lot of discussion that went on, and Mr. Nick Ward-Willis, if you may, give a overview of how we are going to proceed and...
Yes, certainly, Mr. Mayor. So the board needs to consider the five resolutions that were... Thank you. I can always hear myself, it's good to know you can't hear me, thank you for the reminder. So the board has the five resolutions in front of it tonight concerning the property purchase that needs to be voted on in the order in which they're presented. I did want to provide to the board and the public just a general response to the questions about the process. There was concern about meetings and not being, this process coming forward later. Well, the open meetings law actually provides that topics of purchase of real property are to be held in executive session. You don't do your negotiations in public when you're buying a property. And that's why it's been put on tonight's agenda, on last week's agenda, so the public was aware of it. Additionally, the public hearing the board scheduled is unprecedented. It's not required by law to have a public hearing when a municipality's purchasing property. With respect to the concerns about SECA and segmentation, I think if people had listened tonight, you heard that there were a variety of general municipal uses proposed for this property. SECA requires that you evaluate an action. There clearly is no action other than the purchase and the bonding. There's no other potential use of a property other than parking, which is what it's currently done for. We're not proposing to tear the building down or put something new up there, or put a firehouse on there. There were a number of different proposals, so there's no, I understand the comment about the SECA segmentation, it does not exist in this, in this situation. And there was also a question regarding the general municipal purposes. We've spoken with bond council, bond council is fully aware of all the potential uses, and there were discussions tonight talking about what all those potential uses are. This property is clearly being purchased and acquired for general municipal purposes, and we've heard, had discussions tonight about what those are. So the next step is for the board to consider the five resolutions that it has before, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So the first resolution I have before me is adopting a negative declaration in connection with the village of Suffolk proposed action to purchase a parcel of real estate and issue bonds to finance the purchase. So I have the resolution in front of me, once again, adopting a negative declaration in connection with the village of Suffolk proposed action to purchase a parcel of real property and issue bonds in the aggregated principal amount of $3 million to finance the purchase. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hertzman, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next resolution, authorizing the village of Suffolk to acquire a parcel of real property located at 37 Washington Avenue. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have, trustee, I'm sorry. Trustee Albert, second?
Second.
Trustee Hertzman, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next resolution, a bond resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $3 million to finance the acquisition of a parcel of real property located at 37 Washington Avenue. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Gerard, do I have a second? Roll call vote, Trustee Albert?
Yes.
Trustee Gerard?
Yes.
Trustee Hagan?
Yes.
Trustee Hertzman?
Yes.
I vote yes. Next resolution, authorizing a modification to the Avon Capital Corporation pilot agreement dated September 12, 2003. Do I have a motion? Trustee Hertzman, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next resolution, authorizing the professional service proposal for chosen companies to conduct a Phase 1 environmental site assessment of 37 Washington Avenue, in an amount not to exceed $3,800. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Gerard, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I guess the fire department left?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I have a, let's see what I have here. Have a resolution here authorizing the villagers' suffering fire trucks to participate in the Orangeburg Christmas Parade, December 14th. One fire truck from each suffering fire company to participate in the December 14th Christmas Parade in Orangeburg, New York. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hertzman, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next resolution, authorizing Santa to ride on a suffering fire truck for visits to residents on December 22nd, 2019. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Gerard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, I had, next resolution, authorizing a repair to the Hook and Ladder Company Building Bay Floor. Board of Trustees does, does hereby authorize Basement Systems of New York, P.O. Mark 1758, Pine Bush, New York, to conduct repairs on the Hook and Ladder Company Building Bay Floor in the amount of $5,818, which shall be paid from, paid for with appropriations currently in the fire department budget for fiscal year 2019-2020. And be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees amends the 2019-2020 fire department as follows: Decrease appropriations on A3410420002 in the amount of $5,818, and increase, and increase the appropriation on line of 8341044000033 in the amount of $5,818. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Gerard, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hertzman, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Mills, Culture and Recreation, please.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Village Board. So we are having, we have a couple of events before the end of 2019. Tomorrow, Thursday, November 7th, we've got arty time over at the center. The Veterans Day Parade will be coming up Monday, November 11th. It will be at 11:00 a.m., so 11:11 at 11. Village Hall, we're lining up here, and it'll be going over to the Soldiers' Monument. The Dare Dance, Chief Osborne. Friday, November 15th, will be the Dare Dance at the Community Center from 7 to 9. November 15th also is the Irishman playing at the Lafayette Theater. Tickets are on sale now, they have two showings on the 15th, and it'll be a great evening for the village for people to come out. The shows are at 6:00 p.m. at 10:00 p.m., and, uh, the show is three and a half hours long, so they have two showings that night, and 6 and 10, so if anyone is thinking about it, I would go online and get tickets now, because it's selling, from what I'm understanding, it's selling out pretty quick. So it's gonna be a nice event for the village, as you know, it was filmed partly here, it'll be a great night for, uh, for the village to show off. The next thing is Tootsie on Broadway, as I've said before, we've sold out tickets, and it will be on Saturday, November 23rd. And then the Biggie, the Christmas Parade, will be on Saturday, December 7th, at 6:30 up Lafayette Avenue, and then we'll have Santa at the Community Center. And then on Sunday, December 8th, at 2:00 p.m., we have the Pearl Harbor Ceremony. And as we've had in the past, we're so fortunate to have Chick Galella visiting us at the Pearl Harbor Ceremony, and he will as well be our, um, our...
Yeah, um, Grand Marshal.
Thank you, thank you. The Grand Marshal at the Christmas Parade. So he loves our village, he's always proud to come back, and he's gonna be going down to the Intrepid on Pearl Harbor Day, and then coming here that evening to be our Grand Marshal. So we're very honored, very thrilled to have him as part of our ceremonies. Uh, and then the last thing I have for discussion, so the suffering middle school requested from us a donation of one registration for Clifford Theater. The value of that is 150, is what we would normally do a registration, and I'm requesting that. It's a nice community, uh, event, and Clifford Theater is definitely well representative, if, uh, well represented if we do a registration with them.
I believe we, we, we did this by motion.
Was John done? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, this is, this is done.
Okay.
That's fine.
Well done.
That's fine, but the, uh, just to speak to a couple of the points, the, not just Battery Saturday, thank you, thank you for the DPW, thank you to the Girl Scouts, I know Bruce, um, your daughter, they did a fantastic job, it really was a great event.
It was, yeah.
Thank you to, to Recreation, and, and the CSEA volunteered their time, um, that was really nice of you, thank you very much, but it was a real great event, we have to keep doing it.
And the girls were so proud, because I saw the YouTube video, they were amazing.
Bruce, thanks for organizing that, it was great.
It was fantastic. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Chief Osborne?
Suffering's finest. Um, just real quickly, I just have one item to...
I am, I'm gonna let him go. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, woman hold up.
No, go ahead, you rep, I forgot, I skipped over Fred, but you're there. Sorry, Fred.
Um, just real quickly, I just have one item to vote on tonight, and just a couple of updates. The item that we, I'm asking to vote on is to appoint Vic Wolf as a dispatcher. We put on there at the workshop, pending personnel clearance, he's cleared. Uh, we're asking that you can, I guess you use a different word when I'm saying prorated. Back to Sunday, this past Sunday, November 3rd, as a part-time police dispatcher.
Okay, so I have the resolution here, appointing Vic Wolf as dispatcher part-time. The Board of Trustees appoints Vic Wolf to the position of dispatcher part-time at an hourly rate of $20.60, effective November 2nd, 2019, nunk pro tunk. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hertzman, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Great, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Board, for that. In, um, the month of October, we had 721 police calls and blights for the month. We also went through, at the workshop, just to reiterate for the public, state accreditation process, we've been an accredited police department since 2009. Updates, the reaccreditation occurs every five years. Reaccredited 2014, we just went through the process in October. The State Division of Criminal Justice Services sends three representatives down who are former police chiefs, police executives in the state, and they stayed with us for three solid days. Do ride-alongs, go through policies for the last five years, review every single policy, and there's 110 standards we have to meet to be an accredited agency in New York, and we're, we're one of only 20% of the police departments in the state. They're all accredited. It's a very, uh, very grueling process, but Lieutenant Lachlan handled it for us, oversaw it, and they look at how we handle domestic violence incidents, hiring, budgeting, emergency communications, and 100 and something other issues, and we actually did pass, so we'll be getting our reaccreditation in Albany in December. Said, Mayor, I know they talked to you about our department as well.
Yes, I'd like to, I really would like to elaborate a little bit on it, on, in regards to the accreditation and the process and the hard work that Andy, Lieutenant Lachlan, committed to the suffering police department achieving that goal, once again, every five years. I was debriefed by the accrediting agency, the officers, I'm sorry, what were we calling them?
Assessors.
The assessors, there you go.
Yes.
So, uh, they were fully and highly impressed with the, the, uh, the Village of Police Department on the effectiveness and how it's run, and the policies and procedures that are in place, and thanks to the leadership of Chief Clark Osborne, along with the superior officers downstairs, you're doing a fantastic job, along with the officers, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it, I'm glad you went after it, thank you, totally appreciate it. And just real quickly, I'm gonna go very quickly, because I think the public should know some of this, we're here about the criminal justice reform, not gonna go as in-depth, I spoke at the workshop, there's a lot of information out there, but once again, in January 20, excuse me, January 1st, 2020, New York State will be going under a mandatory criminal justice reform that was passed by the state legislature. This is gonna cause a lot of issues for local departments, be very expensive, there is a discovery process, which means we're gonna have to turn over every piece of evidence, witness information, video, within 24 to 48 hours, to the district attorney's office. And just to give you the gravity, how, how tough this is gonna be, and how stringent on departments, right now, we do that in about 4% of the cases, one in every 25 cases. Now it's gonna be for every single case that requiring it. And it's gonna be, um, it's definitely gonna take its toll on all local departments. We have, we had to upgrade our computer bandwidth, as every department does, to send the information to the DA's office. Just bail elimination is only a few qualifying effects that we can take bail for, which I think, to me, is the biggest issue we're gonna run into, because when, when judges take bails, excuse me, judges take bail, you look at several factors, one is the, you're trying to ensure the person goes back to court, but you're also looking at the severity of the crime, the danger to the community, which is more important, and the dangerousness of the defendant. We have now taken all of that out of the judge's hands, and his people will be automatically released back into the community within 12 hours, mandatory release. So it's gonna cause a lot of issues for us as well, budgetary issues. I will know more about this in January, the police departments have put in up to $1 million in Rockland County, one of them did, another one's putting over $1 million to deal with these changes. I don't know what it's gonna, how bad it's gonna affect us, I will know after January, once we get it with it. But we're doing everything within our power to limit the impact on the village. Um, and I think, just to show you how crazy of a, uh, process it is, we send evidence to the state police lab for drug crimes, any, any, any kind of assault, anything. Takes four to six months to get it back, that's normal. They're now requiring us to have it back within 15 days and discovery, it's impossible. So the county's talking about using private labs, which are extremely expensive. These reforms are put into place in New York State without anybody speaking, who made these laws, to police or prosecutors, so there's a big, big issue going on in the state. Uh, the district attorney's officers are fighting it all, as well as us, as the police chiefs, and I think it's one thing I stress to show you how crazy it is, someone can break into your house, commit a violent crime, get released, or even if they do get, under the requirement, get skin and car stained. But in a certain timeframe, they're able to come back to your house and re-inspect the crime scene with their defend, with their defense attorney, which is absolutely ludicrous. This is only part of it, I am on a committee, rock with the county, all the police departments, and we've been fighting this truth and now with the local politicians. It was basically pushed out of the New York City area, these reforms, but some local politicians did jump on it. I was at a meeting last week, which got pretty heated, with several elected officials going against the people that sponsored this bill. Basically because of the bail reform and the expense for the town of Ramapo, which is right up the street from us, uh, nice meeting with the chief, I'm friendly with, put in for $1 million, and he said, "I think I'm gonna need more for just this year." That is absent, it's an unfunded mandate. I just thought whoever's here should know what's going, and I wanna thank you guys, all of you, you've been very supportive, I spoke to you last time, and if you have any questions at any time, please feel free to let me know, I'll explain it to the best of my ability, or find information. Last but not least, Warren Frank, it's been a pleasure working with you for the last several years. I wish both of you the best, you're still in the village, I know I'm gonna see you. Joe, I think Joe was still here, or Charles, if they left, I wish him the best of luck, and I thank you for your support, whatever it is, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I'm sorry, Mr. Fred Rela, we skipped over you, you're sitting there so quietly, but it's getting late. Thanks, Fred.
Good evening, Board. Uh, since it's getting late, it's 10 o'clock now, I'll cut my comments down to 30 minutes.
What did you mean, four?
Uh, I just wanted to update you on a few grants, we have several of them out there, and we're waiting to hear back on them, so just sort of, just to give you a status. Uh, the first one is the, through the DEC, the Drinking Water Source Program, that's the $50,000 grant that's gonna be awarded to 30 municipalities within New York State to test their drinking water, and to see if there's anything that's leaching into it that might be a contaminant, and then to make appropriate remediation efforts. Uh, and that would be no cost to the municipality, and, um, and it would be an outside consultant that would do that. We applied for this in February of this past spring, we were supposed to know in June, and now it looks like we're gonna know in the spring of 2020, okay? So, uh, there's been a change in personnel, uh, and they also are looking to hire the consultant first, uh, before they actually announce who the award winners are. Okay? Uh, we applied for two grants for the wastewater treatment plant project, uh, that's the $9 million rehabilitation project for the wastewater treatment plant. One of those grants is with the EFC, the Environmental Facility Corps, okay? And that awards you up to 25% of the grant, um, excuse me, up to 25% of the cost of the project, which will be 2.25 million, and also offers you low-interest financing, which is, uh, great for us. Uh, the other grant is through the DEC, and, uh, that's up to a $5 million grant. Uh, the DEC grant, uh, we should know that, uh, usually that's announced, uh, around mid-December and just before Christmas, and the one with the EFC should be announced, uh, in the last week of November, okay?
Keep our fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed, yes. So, uh, also you get extra points if you're not working under a consent order with the DEC, and we are working under a consent order. I know other municipalities apply for this, and they're not operating under a consent order, but they're just looking to get funding for a particular project, so, uh, that gives us greater weight in potentially being awarded the project. Uh, Community Development Block Grant, we put in for new sidewalks on Park Avenue, uh, both sides of the street, and, um, we were recommended, um, to receive the award, this is a federal program though, eh, which is financed through HUD, uh, the Housing and Urban Development, so we're waiting for HUD to get back to Rockland County, who disseminates this grant to the municipalities, and, uh, so as long as HUD approves us, uh, Rockland County basically has, we're gonna be good to go, but that would be for the spring to, uh, summer of 2020. And lastly, um, we put in for a $250,000 grant for a new garbage truck. I was hoping to know, uh, that was through the State and Municipal Facilities Program, sponsored by Ellen Jaffe. I was hoping to know that by this meeting, uh, as I mentioned at the workshop, however, uh, we still have not received word yet, but we should know probably within the next week or two.
Okay.
Okay?
Great, thank you. Thank you, Fred. Great, thank you, thank you, Fred. This time, I'd like to open up to audience participation. If there's anyone from the audience that would like to speak, please come up and state your name.
Michael Curley. Under the referendum law, if the clerk could supply me with the numbers, so I can start the petitions, I was always asked by citizens to do a referendum. And I will be looking into the CQ to see if I totally agree with you, but I don't. And I'll be filing an Article 78, and that, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Board, Bruce Simon, 31 Utopian Avenue, tonight, speaking for the Village of Suffering Community Foundation. And I'm just here to say thank you, in no particular order, to members of the Board, the members of the Foundation, the members of the public, and the members of the CSCA for all the help and all the support. We, on Saturday, had not just Battery Saturday collected, conservatively, the number is 10 tons of things that were kept out of the waste stream. And I can't even begin to imagine what that would have meant in terms of garbage and dumps and toxic chemicals and leaching. The amount of paint, the tires, the computers, the televisions, the small appliances, the batteries. Thanks to the Girl Scouts as well, how could I forget that one? I'll pay for that for the rest of my life. Specifically, I did wanna thank Mayor, you for being there, Mr. Hagan for being there. Thank you, Mr. Albert, Mr. Gerard, Ms. Hertzmann, for your support. I know you could not be there, but you were there in spirit. Elizabeth, I thank you for coming out. Kathy, thank you, and who else was there from the Foundation? Gail Curtin, Kathy Van Sickle, Lana, Connie Hernowitz. Lana, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on her last name. I worked the polls yesterday, and I'm still a little tired, still recovering from that. And specifically, I wanna thank Joe Hunt, Topper, and Larry for coming out and literally breaking their backs at certain points during the day. Somebody came with truck tires, like you would put on the garbage truck. They're not light, picking those up off the ground and putting them into stuff took a lot. And Joe, I cannot thank you or your men enough. I also cannot thank you enough, on behalf of the Foundation, for the generous donation you made to the Foundation. On behalf of the CSCA, but yes, it came in, and I am greatly appreciative, and I'm greatly appreciative of everyone in this village for participating. I don't have the date for the next one yet, Board, as soon as I do, I will let you know. Look early in the year, before the summer, let's put it that way. Hopefully, we'll all have recovered by then, thank you all. And one other thing, Mr. Hagan, Ms. Hertzmann, thank you for your service. As someone who has sat there, I know what it takes, and I appreciate your time. Thank you, everybody.
Bruce, I, yes, I'm sorry. Well, I was just about to say, let's keep the round of applause going for your daughter and the Girl Scouts, which they did a fabulous job. And truly, honestly, and the CSCA in the back for donating that time. You guys always step up to help the villages suffering in any way you can, and we truly appreciate it, thank you too. Good job, guys.
Now can I sit down?
Sure, Bruce, thank you, Bruce. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
On a personal note, I'd have to thank Bruce and everybody that was involved in cleanup as well, because that's garbage that isn't arriving at my corral this time, at least. I know the Board is painfully aware of everything that's gone on at Corral 50 since March. It started in early March, when I first came before the Board. On March 12th, Mr. Suwicky sent a letter to my condo board telling them that they need to come up with a plan to fix this. On March 29th, Charles met with my Board, telling them that they'd have to come up with something concrete. And basically, the only thing they committed to was putting up surveillance cameras. On May 21st, we were issued a violation notice and told to correct the problem. On October 7th, we were issued a second violation notice, along with an appearance ticket. My condo attorney appeared on October 17th, on behalf of Stonegate. And the problem was summarized for the judge as being a little bit of trash that occasionally lands on the ground. And Mr. Magrino said that he has no problem with giving Stonegate a month to come up with a plan. So I'm a little bit frustrated that we seem to be back to where we were in March. If we were given four opportunities before this to come up with a plan, I'm confused as to the purpose of a court appearance, if it's just to tell them to come up with a plan.
So they have a scheduled, a rescheduled court appearance, where they must appear back in the Village Justice Court?
But they've been told four times to come up with a plan, and they've not. So how is just telling them to come up, we're not even, they weren't even told to implement it by the next court date, they were just told to come up with a plan.
Is that correct, Mr. Magrino, just that they were told to come up with a plan, or that when they reappear, they'll have a plan to present to the court?
When you come to court, you don't have a trial, of course, that is the first appearance. They ask for adjournments to come up with a plan. And yeah, the only other thing we could possibly have is trial, and guilty and fine, so that's one factor.
Right.
A little temporary for Mr. Ortiz. But generally speaking, in the first court appearance, you know, they're starting to go trial, and so would be anticipated one time adjournment. So if you come up with a plan, see the plan, and it's satisfied, you're billed, you know, for being able to.
So back in March, one of the things, pretty much the only concrete item they came up with was that they were gonna put out 24-hour surveillance cameras. And yet, at the court appearance, Mark Heselt said that, he said something to the effect of, "I guess we actually need to put cameras, not just the sign saying that there's cameras." So then, the plan that they presented to the village back in March was bogus. So they made promises to the village that they chose not to follow through on. So eight months later, we're now back at the point that now my Board is talking about, my condo Board is talking about perhaps putting out cameras.
I just wanna, I just wanna, you know, I understand that concern, and you know that we've been working diligently, and I've been up there numerous times, along with other Board members, and that there needs to be a remedy implemented by Stonegate 1. And if we can somehow get them to comply with keeping that trash contained in there by either building out a corral or additional containers, I believe that we even, not sure, did we get additional containers?
There's no place to put them.
There is no other room. Mr. Suwicky, did we explore that, the additional containers with the carding company?
Yes, we had a meeting up there, I'm not sure, there might be the name, I'm not sure what that is.
Mm-hmm.
So we did explore that. It would have to be expanded, that corral would have to be expanded. Could we ask the Court to bring in more containers? We could, based on the contract we have with them. But after our review with the Board members, the Court, myself, and I'm not sure if possibly Joe might have been there at that time as well. It was determined that they felt, and even the Court felt that, if we reconfigured in the courts the containers that were there, that they, and it seemed like it was one or two individuals that were causing this havoc. And it seemed like they were intentionally placing the garbage on the ground. So one of the thoughts was, as you mentioned, that we would place a camera, and we would give it, give them an opportunity to see if it would work.
But apparently now, we find out that they didn't actually place a camera, they put a sign saying that they placed one.
Yeah.
So there one concession, working with the Village.
Today, you say, today, you see there's no camera?
I don't know, there's something up there.
All right, let's just, Gertrude, I'm sorry, let's keep the back and forth here with the Board, and then, Mr. Ortiz, can you, yes?
Absolutely. As Gertrude's aware, myself and Mike Stark have been working diligently on this. We've actually brought one person, you know, we gotta lay the whole scenario out here. We actually had a person in court already, who was witnessed by one of the code enforcement officers actually depositing garbage on the ground. I, you know, every time I've gone up there and seen a mess personally, all but one time, there's been room in the dumpsters for the garbage. So I personally don't feel that they need more garbage containers. They either, they just need to get people to comply with decency up there, and it will solve the problem. I've had numerous conversations with Board members and with Gertrude. You are correct, it seems like nothing's been resolved, okay? But we can't, you know, we only have so much of a bully pulpit. We have to go through a process, and you are correct, it hasn't been resolved. That's why they're in court now. So that's why they're there. We bring people into court to try to get a resolution to things, not just for putting garbage on the ground, for all kinds of things. And that's why they're there now. So we, you know, we can't just bring them into court and say, okay, you know, let's have your plan today, we have to work with people. So that's where we're at now. We're working with them to get a resolution. We've gone back and forth with some ideas, but at the end of the day, you know, we can't patrol, you know, we can't be the policeman of the garbage dumpster.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay? And, you know, and the Board has to be given the opportunity, just like anybody else, to resolve the problem.
But we've been giving them opportunities, I don't mean to...
Yes, and that's, and Gertrude, that's why they're in court now. Because they haven't taken, they haven't resolved the problem. So when you don't resolve the problem, the end result is you wind up in court, which is where we are today, your Honor, Mayor.
Right, we're trying to seek compliance, and now, now the end result is the court appearance.
The end result is the court appearance, which is where we are now. Simple.
So they must come in with a plan, and must implement the plan.
We're trying to get it resolved in court now, with the judge, and come up with a plan, and we'll see if this resolves it, because we can't do anything, we personally can't do anything else, other than bring them to court at this point. That's it, and that's where we're at.
And this got better for a period of time. So we're saying that these individuals complied for a temporary period, and then went back to doing what they're...
Other than the first...
It goes back and forth up there, from what my observation, she obviously sees more than I do, because I'm not there every day. But, you know, we don't know, and I don't, you know, I don't know that it's only one person. I don't know that it's only two people.
That's exactly...
And I don't think that Gertrude knows that it's only two or three people.
Cameras.
Yeah, so, so the, right, but we can't force them to put cameras in. I made suggestions to them, okay, because obviously I have another life, and I thought, I explained to them what might be a good way to resolve it, although I wasn't involved, didn't want to be involved in it. But I counseled them on maybe a good idea, and they didn't take advantage of that, but maybe now they're going to, we don't know. But that's why we're in court now, and to try to get a resolution to it through the legal process. And that's what the court's all about.
So since their court appearance, you can see, the Court doesn't see these either. These are two occurrences that happened.
Okay, well, we're trying to get it resolved in court, Gertrude, that's all I can really say at this point. You know, obviously, we're not doubting that that's like that, but let's hope the court case resolves these problems. That's pretty much all I can, you know, we can really say at this point.
Understood.
When they're cited, you know, for the garbage that ends up with the court appearance tickets and whatnot, is there fines associated with that?
That's all part of the court process, there could be, there could be a resolution where there's no fine, there could be a resolution where there's a fine.
So would it be advantageous and encourage them to comply by literally, at least for a short period of time, visiting every day for a couple weeks? And if there's needing to be 20 summonses or whatever, they'll have enough bills that it'll be worth their while to do something?
Just because we bring them, so, just so everybody's clear, when you issue, when we issue parking tickets, for example, on that parking ticket list, there's fire hydrant, handicap, and there's a set number for each one. To issue that, you can come into court and pay that fine, that exact amount. But with what we do, it doesn't exactly work that way. So, you know, I can issue three or five violations for the same thing. At the end of the day, it's up to a dollar amount, but it's the judge's discretion at the end of the day. You know, they may come in, you know, the judge doesn't have to find them anything.
Is that, is that based on a current village ordinance, or is that a state law, or...
It's just the way our system works.
I mean, I just feel like, if they're not complying, people, when they're, people being, like the owners of the property, when they're hit financially, is when they're gonna actually do something. So I don't know, I'm asking, is this a village ordinance?
I don't know, would that be, would that fall under village law, a village ordinance? I believe it is a village ordinance.
I'm wondering if we can pass an ordinance that allows us to set a fine for garbage, you know, on the...
I still think it's up to the justice, but let Mr....
That's what the ordinance is, that's what they're in court for now. So they were in court, as I said, once. And when they came in, the attorney indicated that they had somebody go, you were there. So I think it was either every other day or something, and so if they have the person go at 5:00 on Monday, and at 6:00, somebody leaves garbage, and they're not there again till Wednesday, you know, every other day doesn't work. So the purpose of court is, you know, they're entitled to, they have certain rights, I don't believe it or not, but so they can have a trial and make a determinate, and the judge could make a determination, "Well, I see this, you know, is that, you know, meet the definition of the charge that they're charged with?" So it's not as simple as, you know, somebody parking in a, you know...
Right, but my question is, can it be? Can this Board pass an ordinance?
No, there's an ordinance already, there is an ordinance.
I'm saying, can this Board pass an ordinance allowing a financial fine every time it is observed that there is a violation?
No, 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 because a violation, it's just like, it's like saying, just like with parking, even if you get a parking ticket, you're still entitled to a trial.
Yeah.
So yes, if you're parking illegally, you might get fined.
Right, but my point is, if they had a stack of, you know, like every day, they're getting another ticket...
They would be, they would get trials each time.
Correct, but my point is, there might be some fines associated with it.
There are fines associated with it. We, what you're talking about exists, so it's a matter of how it gets implemented. Court meets once a month.
Yeah.
Much like the chief was just saying, somebody comes into court, you don't say, okay, you're guilty, the judge doesn't say, "You're guilty, you owe, you know, a $500 fine."
Right.
They are entitled to discovery, they're entitled to an opportunity, you know, have their lawyer, et cetera. Everybody gets at least one time a German. At this one time a German, in this particular case, rather than waste a month and do nothing, we said, "Come up with a plan," and this court can't impose a plan. That's part of my negotiations, by saying, "If you come up with a plan, I'll recommend maybe a lesser fine." Come up, because we'd rather get it fixed than just keep fining it. So that's kind of the carrot and the stick routine. So the situation is, the first time in court, it can, you can't do anything unless you have a trial. So that's, that's just the nature of the beast, that's the process. So the Board has its remedies in place. It was put off for one month. If they come up with an acceptable plan, you know, fine, and, you know, again, we have something hanging over their head to try to have them comply.
But their acceptable plan that they offered to the village back in March was to put up cameras. Apparently now, we're postponing that, wasn't even done. So now they're gonna come back, possibly in November, and say, "Yeah, we've decided we're gonna put up cameras." So we are literally wasting eight months in not resolving this.
Well, that's, again, I don't know the situation that's happened during the eight months, what the conditions were.
But you've been here every single time we've brought this up.
No, I, ma'am, what I'm saying is, if the case doesn't come to court, you're saying eight months. For eight months, there has been no charge, so I have not known what the condition existed during those eight months.
So there was just notice of violations, there weren't appearance tickets issued, that's what... Some people don't understand that. Right, I believe that's what the point is, is that the notice of violations were issued, and now they didn't see compliance, there was no compliance, and they went forward with an appearance ticket. So now, the first adjournment, they were able to adjourn it, indicate to them, "Come back next month, have a viable plan, and then the judge is gonna make the decision or the negotiation with Mr. Magrino to determine the next step."
So meanwhile, we live with trash. So meanwhile, we live with trash.
If that's the process, but like we did say, that it did, it did stop.
And now it's back.
And it's back.
Do we visit this every six months, every five months?
That's, that's a good question, like how would we follow up? Would it be, would it be inspecting it daily, every other day, figuring out when the, when the container service picks up on Tuesdays and Thursdays? I don't know, what's the pickup date on, on, at Stonegate 1?
Um.
Monday, Wednesday, Friday, so it'd be something like we'd have to charge the building department or code enforcement to make sure that they make their rounds and, and observe that location and monitor it for a certain period of time and take the photos and, and see where we go after we seek the compliance after next month. That's what, that's what I would, I'll discuss it with Mr. Magrino and the building inspector. I think that would be an approach. As Randy, yeah, I mean, I don't, do you have any other recommendation? I mean, I understand the board is not really, your condo board is not moving fast enough.
After all these instances, they would possibly be taking this seriously and.
And they're not.
And the court appearance was on 17th of October. And is it okay if I show the board?
Sure.
Photos?
Sure.
This is how serious they were. This was on, published 22nd and this was just on November 3rd.
It's definitely unacceptable and that, I mean, we do have to find a remedy.
And yet the judge was told that the problem is that there's a little bit of trash on the ground occasionally. I wouldn't.
Well, I think next time before, I'm sorry for cutting you off, the next, at the next court appearance, because I believe that we should bring the photos and, and present the photos to make a stronger case, to show the judge, I mean, if, if, if we can do that, the ongoing situation and the lack of, of concern by Stonegate.
You know, I get the feeling, I know the village has a see something, say something policy and I don't doubt this board's commitment to that policy. Mayor, I know how much time and effort you've put into this. Randy, I know how many times you've been there and how much you've worked on it. Joe, you went over there last, for the last meeting at 10 o'clock at night to document.
Yes, ma'am.
And yet we got to court and the judge saw none of that, I give you a patient.
As Mr. Magrino said, I just sometimes just. I don't share that faith, I have to tell you.
Minimizing this to a little bit of trash on the ground every once in a while is something that is so classic of my condo attorney. I guess I'm disappointed because I expected better out of Mr. Magrino.
We take it as serious as you do and hustling, I say, we should bring up just about.
And yet that wasn't reflected in court.
He's always saying, he knows the law better than the court.
For sure.
To, you know, and, and, he's the one that says, we can't, we have to buy out of this, sir.
Okay, so just so I understand what to expect, if the November court appearance hypothetically, my condo attorney will come to court with a plan?
Possible, I don't know if I can make it on this.
For sure.
If I have a plan, it comes to a plan, I guess, the only thing I can do is let me know the stats and, and either the, the F stat is complete, he has a right to continue his non-compliant, his non-compliant, and then he can be followed, maybe he's not able to get a trial, if the condo association is not able to get a trial.
So best case scenario, say they come with a plan. I'm guessing it's not gonna be too terribly different than what they said their plan was back in March that they didn't implement, but best case scenario, they come with a plan. Is that gonna be followed up on in some way or is this my obligation to take pictures every day and prove to you that they're not, the plan is not working?
Yeah, it's a matter of code enforcement, so we're on the ground, we will have to say, hey, look, the plan was X, they're not complying with X, and then that would be interesting for us all. Between Randy and myself, can you make sure that it is watched and if it's not being followed or get raw information?
Especially after a plan is implemented and ordered by the judge or accepted by the judge, is that correct? So I think that's the only route right now that we can take. Wait for the, wait for the court appearance, implement the plan and then we're gonna have to monitor the plan to ensure that, that they're following the plan. I don't think there's any other route relief right now.
See something, say something, doesn't, to somebody who's trying to participate in this and follow all the steps, it's, and I place no blame on the board and not with building inspector or code enforcement, but it's very discourteous to somebody who's actually trying to follow procedure, because it does the same tour.
I'm gonna follow up tomorrow with, with the building department and see if there's any other relief, I mean.
Okay.
All right?
Yep.
Thank you.
Joseph Hunt, CSA president, 8369 Village of Suffolk. Frank and Moore, I want to thank you for your dedicated service to this community and the employees here in the village, okay? Thank you for all that you've done and I expect to see you out and about more now that you have a lot more free time. All right, I just want to elaborate on what Bruce had said about our recyclable day. We completely loaded four pallets of paint, four pallets of TVs and monitors, one complete pallet of bases, the computer itself, and a pallet and a half of printers. And then Bruce took the printers, inks, and then we had about half a garbage truck of garbage, because the microwaves went into metal and some of your vacuums went into the back of the garbage truck as plastic. So it was a heavy load and very strenuous, so I gotta come and file an R3 form tomorrow morning for my bag, only kidding. But you're doing a great, great job, Mayor.
Thank you, Joe, great job. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Okay, Mr. Zawicki from the Department of Public Works, please.
I'd like to provide the board with update on some projects. The Phase 10 roadway improvement project is substantially complete with roadway striping and stop bars remaining. The 2019 right-of-way improvement project is also substantially complete. The contractor has subcontracted out sprinkler repairs that started today along with lawn restoration work. As the board knows, we sent him a letter yesterday. That work should be done next week, you know, it would be either the mid part of, possibly the mid part of next week should be completed.
I'd just like to mention about the Phase 10, so the roadway improvement that was included with the parking lot, right, that was included under Phase 10?
Yes.
So I think, I'd just like to make a recommendation in regards to the line of demarcation there with the berm. Are we going to address that berm from, from the 9/11 memorial back to the retention pond?
Well, how so? I mean, I know we talked about.
I don't know, it doesn't look that good to me.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we did talk about some options and we certainly get together to revisit that.
Okay.
So we do have a couple of things, I guess, we could do there, yeah.
And overall, the project went very smooth. I, I actually observed some, I think it was Todd who really oversaw the majority of the project.
Excellent job.
I think he did a great job and no complaints and it looks really good.
I have a, I have a question actually.
Yeah, sure.
About the curb cuts that were made for the ramps for the disabled on Foxwood Avenue. I noticed that everything's still sort of roped off.
Well, it was taken care of today.
Oh, it was, okay, I was gonna say it was like that for several weeks. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, with the, the contractor was a little bit slow in responding and we had to send him a letter. The Wayne Avenue sidewalk grant project, unfortunately still awaiting DOT permits. The gentleman that normally would handle those permits locally was transferred, ended up sending it off to Poughkeepsie, so that was our fear when you go for a DOT permit. You know, it was always mentioned, well, you know, it could take two or three months. Well, you know, we, in the past, we've been pretty lucky, this one's taking quite a bit of time, so I'm hoping we get some good news this week, but I'll keep you.
We also have to keep in mind when we're speaking to the DOT in regards to the crosswalk at Estegitlow.
Right, right, so we're working on trying to get the right contacts there. I did reach out to the county transportation group.
Right.
And I explained our concern and I'm waiting to hear back from them on the contacts that they do, it would be appropriate to get into that meeting.
Okay, all right. Also, I'm on a roll now, so the railing that we spoke about in the workshop, at the workshop, under the Chestnut Street overpass, if we can make sure that we get somebody on air to, to really take a look at that.
Yeah, actually, along with that, and I'll be getting together with Clark on, you know, looking at, you know, a few items down in that area.
Okay.
Okay, so I am requesting authorization for Stanley Dubrinsky, John Conklin to attend the Hudson Valley Waterworks Conference on November 11, November 13th, 2019 in Montgomery, New York, at a cost of $30 per employee.
So I have that resolution in front of me, authorizing Stanley Dubrinsky and John Conklin to attend the Hudson Valley Waterworks Conference, November 13th, 2019 in Montgomery, New York. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hertzmann, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Excuse me. I am requesting authorization to amend the New York State DOT, Department of Transportation, 2018-2019 snow and ice agreement that was increased by $210.63.
I have the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the amended 2018-2019 New York State Department of Transportation municipal snow agreement. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Okay, any other questions?
No, just they did a good job on that, on the paving and the oversight, but Todd was there, it was, they did a great job.
Yeah, yeah, really did.
All right.
Yes, more.
Charles, you know, we mentioned during the workshop that there were a couple of the streetlights out. I noticed when I was driving in today that now it's the one in front of Suffering Furniture. Is that?
All right, let me, we'll get together, put a word together and really get that resolved. Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Next I have on the agenda, resolution establishing Capital Project 2020-007, acquisition of Avon Properties. Now therefore be resolved, the Village of Suffolk Board of Trustees hereby establishes the Capital Project 2020-007, 2020 acquisition of Avon Properties as follows, appropriations of $3 million, estimated revenue of debt, $3 million. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Gerard, second.
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next resolution authorizing the village treasurer to attend the NYGFAO advanced accounting and financial reporting training, November 20th through 21, 2019 in New Pulse, New York, at no cost to the village. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hertzmann, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next is the resolution establishing the position of village claims auditor. Whereas the village board is authorized to establish the position of village claims auditor pursuant to village law section 3-301, sub 2C, and 5-5243. And whereas the village clerk, deputy village clerk, and senior account clerk have been performing the functions of village claim auditor for at least 30 days, and whereas the original resolu.
30 years.
30 years, sorry. And whereas the original resolution or resolutions establishing the position of village claims auditor cannot be located, now therefore be it resolved that the village board officially establishes the position of village claims auditor effective immediately, and be it further resolved, the village board recognizes that the village clerk, the village deputy clerk, and the senior account clerk have performed these functions of village claims auditor for over 30 years, and further be resolved, the village clerk, deputy village clerk, and senior account clerk shall continue to perform these functions of village claims auditor. There's a malfunction. Do I have a motion?
Um.
Go ahead.
I'm not, I'm not sure this is the, the correct resolution. I thought that there was a single claims auditor that was being reviewed at the workshop meeting.
Yeah, I think you're right. Never said it was gonna be the deputy clerk.
It generally is the deputy clerk, but, because she's the one that processes those payments, but I think it's trying to say is in her absence, it would be the other two entities. There's really only one person that's doing the job at this point.
Establishes the position of village claims auditor.
If you give me a moment, maybe I can find the resolution from the workshop.
Okay, so let's hold this.
It hasn't changed, but you go ahead.
You haven't.
I'm gonna check.
That's the workshop?
Okay. I would ask that the board table this resolution and if I could have time to work with Mr. Janito on it. I had, I had thought that there was one individual that was going to be appointed as the, as the village claims auditor. So my suggestion would be to just table this resolution and then I can revisit that issue with, with Mr. Janito and come back with a suggestion.
Do I have a motion to table this resolution? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Gerard, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Trustees, trustee Albert, do you have anything?
Nothing else.
Trustee Gerard?
No.
Trustee Hagan?
Yes, it's been a pleasure to work here for six years and I'm not going away, you can't get rid of me. You will still see me at the meeting. Thank you, village.
Thank you.
I have a statement also, it's a little bit longer.
It's late.
Because I want to drag it out for the eight people that are left. I'll speak quickly. I have been privileged to be a part of a board and work under the direction of a mayor whose number one priority was to gain fiscal soundness to our budgeting practices and renew and revitalize our business district. To that end, we have achieved that goal. I also want to thank Mike Janito for his excellent work as our treasurer. His service to our community is immeasurable. One thing that I've learned during my four years on the board is that as a community, we are all responsible for what happens, good or bad. We choose our elected officials to represent us. As residents, where we fall short is not being actively involved throughout the year to build upon the good things or stop ideas or actions that are not in all our best interests. That community involvement is key to a vital and prosperous village. There have been so many positive changes going on right now and moving on into the future, and I hope that all of us take the time and the effort. future, and I hope that all of us take the time and the effort to continue along that positive path, build upon our achievements, and continue to make the village of Suffering a great place to live. To that end, I want to thank our mayor for all of his efforts to revitalize our village. We are beyond lucky to have a full-time mayor that watches over our interests on a daily basis. And I welcome the incoming trustees and hope that they are successful in building an even stronger, vital community for us all. So I thank you.
Thank you, Mo, very kind words, and, um, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Frank Hagan, the outgoing deputy mayor, who really served tirelessly with me for five years now. You're, you're, you're going on six years, but we worked together for five, I believe. And Ms. Hertzman, we're sad to see you go.
I won't torture you anymore.
You can sit in the audience. And, um, thank you for everything you've done for the village, the both of you, and we'll miss working with you. Thank you for everything. On that note, thank everyone for coming out this evening. Motion to close the meeting.
Motion.
Trustee Albert, second. Trustee Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.